Is that, we're good? Okay. I'd like to call a meeting to order. May we please stand for a pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible)
Yep. Let me get to that. Okay. For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. 7:37, the 26th day of August. We're convening in the Annegy Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer is Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Mr. John Neese, our Superintendent of Schools; Mr. Kenneth Kopas, our Assistant Superintendent for Personnel; Dr. Gary Maeda, Board Secretary; Mr. Thomas Figueroa Jr., our Acting School Business Administrator; Dr. Dennis Degnan, our Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction; and Mitchell Piscual Esquire, our Board Counsel. The meeting's open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo.
Present.
Trustee Casillas.
Present.
Trustee Cruden.
Present.
Trustee Finerty.
Present.
Trustee Munoz.
Present.
Trustee Ryan.
Present.
Trustee Velado.
Present.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Here.
President Broderick.
Present. For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the municipal clerk of the city of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan. Before we start, before we start, I'd like to, we're going to take a moment of silence for, we've lost one of our family, young man named Michael Nargie. I'd like to make a little statement about him, and then if we could have a moment of silence after that. Tonight, we're going to take a moment to remember a very special young man, Michael Nargie. Despite being diagnosed last July with a terrible cancer, he always remained positive and upbeat. Michael endured several rounds of chemotherapy, countless radiation treatments, and two surgeries. Unlike many teenagers, he loved school. He looked forward to spending the day with his friends, classmates, and teachers. In fact, when he went on home instruction, he'd remind his mother every day the teacher was coming. Truth be told, we're not really sure if that was because he wanted to do algebra or surprise the teacher with one of his many wigs. To delight Mrs. Sweeney, his home instruction teacher, Michael introduced her to Gene Simmons, Michael Jackson, and Buddy the Elf. His collection was extensive. Not only that, he would always ask how well his teachers in school were doing. He was caring and compassionate to others, even when his illness was at its worst. One of the things he was most proud of was serving on the student council at Washington School, elected by his peers to be the voice, and it was an honor and privilege that he never forgot. Michael had many of the same likes and interests as many teenagers. He enjoyed movies, especially going with his mother to see them. He loved going out to eat, but one of his greatest joys was the band Kiss. They were the first concert he went to, and he actually dressed like Gene Simmons for it. He would be dearly missed by his loving mother, Michelle Propot Nargie, countless loving relatives, everyone who was fortunate enough to meet him. Michael was predeceased by his beloved father, Michael Vincent Nargie. He also loved the song by the script titled "Hall of Fame," so much so that he secretly recorded a YouTube cover of its cover. Whenever he would hear it, his face would light up, and part of the lyrics included, "Standing in the Hall of Fame, the world's gonna know your name, 'cause you burn with the brightest flame, the world's gonna know your name, and you'll be on the walls of the Hall of Fame." Although Michael's flame may have burnt out well before its time, everything was much brighter because of his presence while he was with us, and everyone whose lives Michael touched here on earth, Michael will always be on their Hall of Fame.
First up, our approval of minutes, acceptance of communications. Everything is listed on our bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion from Trustee Finerty. I have a second by Trustee Velado. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up, we'll start with our consent agenda. We start with curriculum, instruction, and policy, Section A. I'd like to make a note that Resolution A4 and Resolution A9 are being moved to nonconsent. So, our curriculum agenda, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Trustee Casillas and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, but I do have a question. Ms. Melissa Godsky Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F, has a question on Resolution A18.
Melissa Godsky Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F. So, there was a grant for the $273,000 for the, the school-based youth services, and I know earlier at the workshop you were talking about how we can make the site a little bit more user-friendly for our families. One thing I noticed, it was very hard to search for those services when I plugged them in. It actually doesn't come right up, but a lot of other districts do. So maybe if you can just make that a priority with this great grant that we received, that families know to ask about these great services that we are offering. It's just a suggestion based on what you said earlier.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, on that motion and second, Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up is our finance, building, and grounds resolutions, B1, up to and including B18. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion from Trustee Ryan, a second from Trustee Munoz. On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Next up is our personnel resolutions, Resolution C1, up into including C13. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion?
Other way around?
I'll second.
There you go.
I'll go.
Motion? Motion?
Second.
Second. There we go. So I have a motion from Vice President Wilbeck. I have a second from Trustee Finerty. On that motion and second, Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
I apologize, give me one second. Okay, I'd like to redo that. Resolution C13, I apologize, is being moved to nonconsent. Okay, to do this correctly, we have an agenda of curriculum, I'm sorry, an agenda of personnel, Resolution C1 to C12. Resolution C13's moving to nonconsent. I have a motion still by Vice President Wilbeck, and I still have my second from Trustee Finerty. So on that motion and second, Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Still yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
So Resolution A4, it was moved by Trustee Velado?
Oh, it's seconded by me. I make that motion.
You got it. There we go. This stuff is out of order. It's a little confusing. All right, so we have a motion and second on Resolution A4. Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up is Resolution D7, whereas the Bayonne Board of Ed is desirous to continue its Title I program, Every Student Succeeds Act. At this time, the resolution will be assigning personnel to the grant. This is Resolution A4. It is up on our bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
I believe it was...
It's the opposite.
Trustee Munoz?
But that starts a lot?
Yes. So Resolution A4, it was moved by Trustee Velado?
Oh, it's seconded by me. I make that motion.
You got it. There we go. This stuff is out of order. It's a little confusing. All right, so we have a motion and second on Resolution A4. Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
And President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution A4, Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution A4, Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Okay, next up is Resolution C13, which is moved from personnel. Based on the enrollment of students in various grade levels and based upon the recommendations of the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. John Neese, the attached assignment/reassignment resolution. This is C13 on our bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
We have a motion by Trustee Cruden, and we have a second by...
Second, no. I have me moving, but okay. I will second it.
Thank you. So on Resolution C13, Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo?
Abstain.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
There's a lot of names on this list, but at least one was presented, was not presented to the Personnel Committee on Wednesday, on last Monday, rather. It's been a point I've brought home many times to central office. We're not a rubber stamp. It's supposed to go through committee. Everything goes through committee. I really do not like created exigencies. Nobody died. There were days to be called. Nobody communicated with our Personnel Committee about what wasn't discussed, and was presented, some names were presented to us tonight. If it can't be done in a timely fashion, I said one of these days I was going to vote no, just to prove a point. I'm proving a point. It gets to committee, it gets to committee in a reasonable time where committee can read, where they can think, where they can ask questions, and they can report back to us. If that doesn't happen, no. That's going to happen from now on with me. No.
Next resolution. Resolution D2, approval of change of board meeting dates. The regular scheduled meeting for Wednesday, September 25th, will be moved to Tuesday, September 24th, and the scheduled meeting for Wednesday, October 30th, will be held on Tuesday, October 29th. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Trustee Cruden and a second by Trustee Casillas. On that motion and second, Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Question.
Dr. Maeda, I just wanted, on the 24th, are you guys aware that it's back to school?
Yes.
For all the elementary schools?
Yes.
Well, then... It's the 25th.
I know.
Tell me what you want me to do, folks.
Well, just keep on voting. We were voting.
All right. Trustee Casillas?
No.
Well...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, Ted. Yes, sorry.
Okay. Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
So we're moving the meeting to the night of back-to-school?
Yes.
Well, for now, we might change it again, then, right?
Well, no.
We were just in the middle of voting when that came up, so...
Well, it's very... Anybody looking? I didn't know, I wasn't aware of that, so I'm voting no, because I'm a parent and I got to be there for back-to-school night, so no.
Trustee Munoz?
No.
Trustee Ryan?
And now everybody knows what I was complaining about before. No.
Next up, D3.
I'll vote no, because it wasn't even asked. I was not aware of the conflict myself, and I, I'm sorry, I was not aware of this conflict until the President of the Union brought it, and I had already voted. I, I'm sorry. Can I withdraw my, my yes vote or no? I wasn't aware of that.
If the two trustees that moved in second would like to remove their move in second, I'll table the resolution.
Please table it.
Because I've, I've done this resolution too many times today, so... Okay, so we're going to table D2.
Well, that was the...
I'm going to move to D3, stipulation settlement agreement.
Let me, what happened?
Sure, good.
If I, just so people don't think we're too crazy up here, the change of date, one of the reasons we were talking about changing the date, as you're aware, policies came back to us from the state where in picking certain positions, it came down to who was able to vote, who wasn't able to vote. And in some of those positions, it came down to where only five trustees could actually vote. So, seeing that, what happened, you know, we'd get, a trustee might say, you know, "I can't make that date." Now, ordinarily, I would still leave eight people, but if it's one of those five people, there's nothing we can do, so what we've been trying to do is work it out that at least the five voting people would always, could be here for any of those kind of votes, so... But it's not easier said than done, evidently, so... Well, we'll go back to the drawing board on that one, but that is basically the reason for the changes.
That was also a sudden reason for the change in date for this evening also. So, D3, whereas there's currently pending a matter before the New Jersey Department of Education and Bayonne Board of Education and NB and MK, there's a stipulation of settlement. I won't go into the whole resolution or the whole agreement. It is on our bulletin board. But do I have a motion for D3?
I'll motion.
And do I have a second?
I second.
So I have a motion from Trustee Casillas. I have a second from Trustee Ryan. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Next up is D4. Whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to appoint an assistant, I'm sorry, an acting school business administrator to meet the current operating needs of the school district, therefore, it is recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. John Neese, that the below-name personnel be appointed to the position of acting school business Be it further resolved that this Board of Education approves the recommendation made by the Superintendent of Schools to appoint the personnel listed below on the effective date indicated. Mr. Daniel Castles, School Business Administrator, salary is $177,684, effective date is September 1st, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Trustee Cruden, I have a second by Trustee Munoz. On that motion and second, Trustee Casillas?
Abstain.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Abstain.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Abstain.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Abstain.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
And that's it? Yes. Okay. Next up, D5. Whereas this Board of Education finds it necessary to appoint a school business administrator to meet the current operating needs of the school district, therefore, be it resolved that it's recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. John Neese, that the below-name personnel be appointed to the position of school business administrator. Be it further resolved that this Board of Education approve the recommendations made by the Superintendent to appoint the personnel listed below on the effective date indicated. Mr. Daniel Castles, School Business Administrator, salary is $177,684, effective date is September 1st, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
So on that motion by Trustee Casillas and that second by Trustee Munoz, I'm sorry, Trustee Cruden and seconded by Trustee Munoz, Trustee Casillas?
Abstain.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Abstain.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Abstain.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Abstain.
And President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next up, Resolution D7. Whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to appoint an assistant principal to meet the current operating needs of the school district, therefore, be it resolved that, recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. John Neese, that the below-name personnel be appointed to the position of assistant principal. Be it further resolved that this Board of Education approve the recommendations made by the Superintendent of Schools to appoint the personnel listed below on the effective date. Mr. Evan Wexler, Assistant Principal, assigned to Henry E. Harris and Horace Mann Community School, salary is $124,097, and effective date of September 1st. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
I second.
So I have a motion and second on Resolution D7. Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Abstain.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Abstain.
And President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next up, Resolution D7. Whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to appoint an assistant principal to meet the current operating needs of the school district, therefore, be it resolved that, recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. John Neese, that the below-name personnel be appointed to the position of assistant principal. Be it further resolved that this Board of Education approve the recommendations made by the Superintendent of Schools to appoint the personnel listed below on the effective date. Mr. Evan Wexler, Assistant Principal, assigned to Henry E. Harris and Horace Mann Community School, salary is $124,097, and effective date of September 1st. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
I second.
So I have a motion by Trustee Casillas. I have a second by Trustee Munoz. On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden?
Abstain.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Abstain.
And President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next up, Resolution D7. Whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to appoint an assistant principal to meet the current operating needs of the school district, therefore, be it resolved that, recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. John Neese, that the below-name personnel be appointed to the position of assistant principal. Be it further resolved that this Board of Education approve the recommendations made by the Superintendent of Schools to appoint the personnel listed below on the effective date. Mr. Evan Wexler, Assistant Principal, assigned to Henry E. Harris and Horace Mann Community School, salary is $124,097, and effective date of September 1st. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
I second.
So I have a motion and second on Resolution D7. Well, I won't read it again. It is our school business administrator.
And I'll second.
Okay, so on that motion, and second, resolution D5, well, I won't read it again, it is our school business administrator. Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
I abstain.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Abstain.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Abstain.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Abstain.
President Broderick?
Yes.
The resolution passes. I know this is my first board meeting, but Mr. Castle's in doing mine, and we're not related. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by trustee Cruden, and a second?
Second by...
By trustee...
Yes, I second.
Right, so I have a motion by trustee Cruden, a second by trustee Munoz, on resolution D6, whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to appoint an assistant business administrator to meet the current operating needs of the district. Be it resolved that it is recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. John Neese, that the below name personnel be appointed to the position of assistant school business administrator. Be it further resolved that this Board of Education approves the recommendation made by the Superintendent of Schools to appoint the personnel listed below on the effective date. Mr. Thomas Figu, assistant business administrator, $163,397, effective date would be September 1st, 2019. I have a motion and a second. On that motion, and second, trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Abstain.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I meant to abstain.
Okay, I will change that, there's an abstain.
Did you actually say my name, did you call me Munoz?
Yeah, he did.
He did.
He's learning.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Ryan?
Abstain.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Abstain.
And President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Next up, resolution D7. Whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to appoint an assistant principal to meet the current operating needs of the school district, therefore, be it resolved that, recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. John Neese, that the below name personnel be appointed to the position of assistant principal. Be it further resolved that this Board of Education approve the recommendations made by the Superintendent of Schools to appoint the personnel listed below on the effective date. Mr. Evan Wexler, assistant principal, assigned to Henry E. Harris and Horace Mann Community School, salary is $124,097, and effective date of September 1st. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
I second.
So I have a motion and second on resolution D7. Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo?
No.
Resolution D8. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education has determined that there's a need for a 12-month Director of Phys Ed, Community Education Center, ICERIN, for the 2019-20 school year. Be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education approves the recommendation of Mr. John Neese, Superintendent of Schools, and appoints the following individual to this position to be paid on board discretion at a stipend of $11,543, beginning September 1st, 2019, and it's Dr. Michael Pearson. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
On that motion, and second, trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
As I said earlier, some items haven't been brought before either personnel, or in this case, personnel and finance. The board is not a rubber stamp, and I'm not going to vote for things that are brought before the board, right before the meeting itself. No.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
No.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo?
I have to concur with trustee Ryan, I vote no.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Okay, resolution passes. I'd like to go back and revisit resolution D2. It was brought to our attention about back to school night, so it will now read that the September board meeting that was scheduled for September 25th will be held on Monday, September 23rd. And the board meeting scheduled for Wednesday, October 30th, will be held on Tuesday, October I have a motion, trustee...
I'll motion.
Motion by trustee Cruden, and a second?
I'll second.
And a second by trustee Casillas. So I have a motion by trustee Cruden, and a second by trustee Casillas. Resolution D2, which is our change of meeting. Trustee Finerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Let's just double check. Okay, Mr. President, that is all I have for this evening, but we have three questions from the audience. Like to remind the audience, you've got three minutes. First up is Mr. Joe Lyatt, 301 Maple Avenue, 261, North Plainfield, New Jersey. I will let you ask your question, all right?
So I'm going to be really quick. My question is, what is the cost of lies? And I read, I encourage you all to watch the video Chernobyl, it's very interesting, it parallels the, the Board of Education and this district, okay? And in that, there's a dialogue, and the main character, Mr. Legasov, says, "And this at last is the gift of Chernobyl. Where I once would fear the cost of truth, now I only ask, what is the cost of lies?" And the cost to, in Chernobyl, was 2,600 square kilometers, made uninhabitable for 1,000 years. That's 65% of the state of Rhode Island, that's a pretty heavy cost. 300,000 people were displaced from that area, unable to return. 600,000 people were conscripted to work in the danger zone, and the Soviet government kept no records of what happened to those people, and I guarantee you, most of them died of radiation sickness. And 40,000 people were probably killed, and the official death toll is 31. So, and then the question is, what is the cost of our lives? And the cost of our lives is the, is the lives of our children. Their mental health, their physical health, their success in life. When we lie, we diminish their ability to function in society. That's the cost. Your children, your grandchildren, your neighbors' children. Sometimes I wonder if I care more about them than you do. So what I'm going to do in the, in the next month, that's the cost. Okay, I'm, I'm back, and I'm here to stay. And what I'm going to do in future board meetings is I'm going to start enumerating the lies. I'm going to start exposing it, the stuff you don't want to talk about, that you don't know. You're going to know it. Now, I offer you this, if, if you wish, I'm perfectly willing to discuss this offline. You know, invite me to the, to the, to the session you have before. And, you know, we can have a dialogue, that's all I want, is a dialogue. Okay? But if you don't do that, then I'm going to, I'm going to make this, you know, I have other venues. I can build a fire under you. I can make people ask you questions. Okay? So that's, that's what I plan to do for the rest of the year. So that's the cost, and we're going to start exposing the lies that generate that cost to your children and the, and the children that are entrusted to my care.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyatt. Next up, Mr. Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street.
Oh, here's, if you wish, here's the script from the Chernobyl.
I'll make copies and make sure the board members get them.
I'll read them out. Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street. First, I want to apologize to Mr. Castle and his family for the embarrassment that we just witnessed here. That's not what Bayonne is about, it's just one person playing the game. Now, how are we handling Mr. Figu's technology position that he had, that he had to step away from, I guess, for the last year to be the acting BA?
We're an acting director that's been in the acting role as long as Mr. Figu's been in his role as the acting BA.
So now what's the process to, are we finalizing him, or are we going back out to search for a...
We will be focusing on that position, and looking to recommend the candidate at, hopefully, September's meeting.
Okay. I see now we're getting assistant BA, Mr. Figu, obviously he's done a great job in the last year. But when was the last time we had an assistant BA?
I don't know if we ever had one.
So what's the need for an assistant BA?
Well...
We have, we have schools that don't have vice principals full-time, but we're bringing in another administration position, so that salary could cover a full-time vice principal, so I'm just wondering.
Well, first, what we're hoping to do is now replace possibly Mr. Figu's salary as far as technology goes, so that would be the makeup there. The other part was that, most people told us that in a school district our size, that we really didn't have enough people, and unfortunately, we saw some of the problems we've had in the past, so we want to make sure that those problems don't occur again, so we thought that having more people, and that would be a better answer to that, especially someone of his position that really knows the district pretty well. And once again, bringing in somebody like Mr. Castle's, you know, his reputation seems to be very good, so we're hoping, we're in the right direction with that.
Okay. The other thing I had, I've noticed, one of the resignation letters mentioned the benefits. Now, I thought when we did the whole layoffs in the back of 287, and I guess we did a partnership with the city to pull the benefits or whatnot, or at least that's what was talked about, if it happened, it happened, but if we're going to lose some teachers because of our benefit plan, to me, that's kind of something that should be a, like, fix, what's going on, like, we're losing teachers because of benefits, and I hear that you pay into the benefits, but a family plan, you don't get it until after tenure or something like that? Is that true?
Yes.
That would be part of the ATAs agreement, the contract that we have, yes, now it's four years in a day for tenure, but it would be three years in a day. You receive single, the first three years, three years in a day, and you'd be eligible for family.
Okay. And then the other thing, I mean, you know, with the embarrassment earlier, this all could have been avoided if you guys didn't play the politics with the board members, you know, this should not have happened. The fact that he even changed his mind just shows that it was a game, and it's all for his satisfaction. This could have been avoided if you guys did your job the right way.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. Our next speaker is Ms. Melissa Godzki Rodriguez. Just please state your address for the recorder.
Melissa Godzki Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F. So, two parts. One, just to kind of go back, I know last meeting I spoke about effective school solutions, I was able to get that over. Looking again at a lot of resolutions on transportation, we're incurring heavy costs, and I kind of spoke about that the last meeting. I just want to know if, like, have we kind of opened our minds to think about what are some of these solutions to these high costs? Especially getting our special needs kids on these buses that can take two to three hours, and thinking about their safety?
Good evening. I'm in day seven of my superintendentship here in Bayonne, I'm very happy to, so the most important thing is to look at the individual student, and how do we provide them with a personalized education, and one of those things as superintendent, is, I believe in equity for all of our students. And that's one of the platforms that I'm obviously going to be working on and looking at, so be prepared. I'm looking to have meetings with, with everybody in the community to find out what we can do to reduce the out-of-district costs, and to provide all the children with their personalized education. And that's going to look different for all of our learners, but it gets to those bases. So I understand that, and it's a very litigious, special education is very litigious as well, and we have a lot of parents that are very, they're advocates for that. So, Ms. Godzki Rodriguez, I know you put a lot of contact information, so I'll reach out to you and we'll talk about that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It would bring a lot of kids, a lot of parents that might have a little bit of relief knowing that there's something in the works to kind of stop putting these kids on buses for a long time. And then, I guess, the second portion, recently, I guess, they're going to be working on the church on the corner of 24th and E., 25th and E., and we have a school right next. What is the city's plan, along with the board's plan, to mitigate noise pollution, pollution in general, for the students that are going to be learning there?
As far as I know, we haven't heard any meeting regarding that yet, but I don't know, does anyone else?
First up.
Does, first, you know, we'd have to go back to the city and ask exactly what they intend to do. I don't know how soon they're looking to do this.
Fencing is up. Oh, it's up, it's like, ready to go, and I know many of us in the community who live near development.
Now, are they, are they building across the street, or are they building...
No, it's literally adjacent next to the school.
Okay.
I just think the parents, like, thinking about drop-off pickup during school hours, this is when construction's going to be happening, we need to have a plan for when that does happen, that those parents and those students are, we mitigate the stress that they're going to have with that development going up.
All right, thank you, we'll definitely get an answer for you.
I'm just a little concerned that we didn't have any thought into that yet, the fencing is up, so it'd be great if you guys can move that along quicker.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Mr. President, that is all the questions.
Mr. President, can I say something? Just to address that comment earlier from Mr. D'Amico, I just wanted to let you know, and, and, and members of the audience, trustee Alonzo did nothing wrong here as far as, you know, there was no politics at play, there was a simple, just honest confusion between the votes of five and three, you know, there was a thought that the superintendent needed all five votes, and the BA did not, it just needed a majority of the five, and that's all there was, it was actually a simple communication error. Trustee Alonzo only changed his vote, not because there were any politics at play, but because it was a simple clarification, you know? So everyone in this audience knows that trustee Alonzo and I have had our squabbles, right, publicly, right? But we are seeing eye to eye on this, and, you know, he's a member of the team, you know, in no way was this meant to embarrass Mr. Castle's. Welcome to the Bayonne family, I think you're going to be a welcome addition.